After two hours, I gave up. Three, still three years is up. You will see for yourself his attendance record. Shouldn't have said his. And it's not about the person. This is another person who's been appointed to the planning board in his attendance record. And again, it's not the person's name. It's about certain people in this community needing to control the planning board for their ... Oh, and last, they have Mr. Lewis's attendance when he was on the planning board. And it's about time the planning board, or the council, since the planning board, a lot of people don't go, they're there to control the planning board, do some work to zone something for light industry, or manufacturing, or warehousing, to give the taxpayers tax relief. But even more important than that, to keep the town afloat because we're out of money. And again, I'm going to say, it isn't about the person. It's about the people sitting in this room. The Republicans started it with Pete Foster, rural. The Democrats followed suit, and you're paying for it. And we cannot any longer afford this community, whether you'll believe that or not. And retail is dead. Worrying about rock walls and coffee shops next to the noon, nine, and the dollar, I heard. The planning board should be doing a little more, or the council should be doing a little more to raise revenues for the community. Thank you.
Moving on to minutes, January fourteenth.
I would not present. I believe I can make the motion, but not vote. I will make a motion that we accept the minutes from January fourteenth as presented.
Second. Discussion? Any none, all those in favor? Aye, aye. No questions? Motion passes. The motion, minutes, January twenty?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from January twenty eighth as presented.
Second. Discussion? I had asked the town to add a name, a couple of names to the list of people who were present. Superintendent Michael Barnes was present, and his best father, Wes, from the friendship lodge, in addition to Mr. Fontaine, who presented the E. Martin Systems check, for these folks. So I'm going to ask to amend the motion to include those two names. Second amendment. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion. The man has unanimously. Is there further discussion on the main motion? Any none, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion unanimously. Next item is swearing in about newly elected council members showing the results of the second election. So, Jane, this is my swear.
Do you, Cheryl Fox, Sally's square, that you will be true and faithful unto the town of Foster, and support the town charter, and that you will be true and faithful unto this state, and support the laws and constitution thereof, and the constitution of the United States, and that you will well and truly execute the position, position to play a town council member for the term for which you have been selected, or until another be engaged in the place, or to legally discharge your funds so far from now? Second motion.
Voice. Payroll warrant number thirty.
Make a motion that we accept payroll warrant number thirty in the amount of thirty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second. Discussion? Any none, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion unanimously. Payroll warrant number thirty-one.
Make a motion that we accept payroll warrant number thirty-one in the amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Second motion. Discussion? Any none, all those in favor? Aye, aye. General warrant number thirteen.
Make a motion that we accept general warrant number thirteen in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand fifty-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second motion. Discussion?
Uh, just a quick question. Uh, page three, seven, it says about building grounds, home depot credit card, stolen eleven hundred and sixty bucks. Is that ... One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight purchases, all in one day, on different ...
They're marked all in one day?
Oh, no.
No, they're actually a course of a month. So paying a credit card, which is, it's really credit, more correct.
I know, but everything is a one, everything in one day, almost, I think. All right.
The side of the dollar one is about something to do with several, if you got, remember, you have a forty-four. I have nothing.
I didn't realize it told me.
It's over the course of a month.
Further discussion? Any none, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion unanimously. General warrant number eleven D.
Make a motion that we accept ...
If I may. I'm sorry. This is the payment for hemlock bills. CDPG grant for hemlock bills.
Oh, thank you.
So.
I will accuse myself. I didn't even notice that thing.
Okay, so.
I make a motion that we pay general warrant number eleven D in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion?
I will be voting no, due to the road map situation, our legislators warned us on voting on any CDPG grants, I will continue to vote no on them. That's why I'm voting no on this project. It's the one that's ...
Further discussion? Any none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion unanimously. General warrant number eleven D.
Make a motion that we accept ...
If I may. I'm sorry. This is the payment for hemlock bills. CDPG grant for hemlock bills.
Oh, thank you.
So.
I will accuse myself. I didn't even notice that thing.
Okay, so.
I make a motion that we pay general warrant number eleven D in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion?
I will be voting no, due to the road map situation, our legislators warned us on voting on any CDPG grants, I will continue to vote no on them. That's why I'm voting no on this project. It's the one that's ...
Further discussion? Any none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion unanimously. Quarterly reports.
I make a motion that we accept the following monthly report as presented for the month of December two thousand and fifteen from the planning department.
Second amendment. Discussion? Any none, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion unanimously. Quarterly reports.
I make a motion that we accept the following quarterly report as presented, the Foster School Committee for October, November, and December two thousand and fifteen, and for the Musa Valley Fire Company for October, Tuesday, December.
Second amendment. Discussion? Any none, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion unanimously. Hold litmus, hazardous mitigation grant application request. This was on at last in our meeting, and we had asked, the consultant asked, the EMA Director, Kuntur Bay, for some additional information.
I got in contact with Citriet, and they have their plans up to date. They're spending roughly ten thousand dollars to update their plan. And Mrs. Juliana King of last year contacted the agency, consulting company, and they say fifty thousand dollars to be more has enough to update our plan. And the other way is also to get, as I mentioned before, to get trends after a disaster, from the FEMA, from the REMA, we need to have the hazard indication, like, we need to have it, otherwise using all the big money for it. And as I mentioned before, this five thousand dollar, what the town of fosters to rewrite, is then can be done in working hours, it's not actually physically money, it's a working hour, and every man or woman who popped in, talk about five thousand dollars.
Okay, so, EMA Department is asking the council to authorize, they go following, with a grant to write Foster's natural hazardous mitigation plan. The grant total is twenty thousand dollars, of which five thousand dollars would need to be made up from the town, as mentioned, pension funds, and to be paid, that can be in kind donation of people's time. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion for discussion purposes, that we allow the EMT to pursue the hazardous mitigation grant application request. Do you have a second?
Second. Discussion?
I have some questions, John.
Okay.
Go right ahead, Mike. What I need to know is, who are these employees that you intend on using hour-wise?
On one side, this is Mrs. Kate, as a town planner, the fire chiefs get involved, obviously I get involved, PPW Department. I looked it up on the old plan, it was seven or eight people from the town. At least everybody who has, is involved in emergency management, or emergency preparation is getting involved.
My only, that's fine. My only point with that is, you will then be covered under the Open Meetings Act and the Access to Public Records Act. Therefore, someone from your group will need to be trained, yes?
No, we wouldn't be all be meeting with that. The consultant would just be contacting, saying, I'm going to contact the PPW Director because I need this information, and meeting with them like that, wouldn't be all of our type of meetings.
If you have any meetings with your emergency management group, you will need to put them on the website, you will need to follow all those Open Meetings Act regulations, and I'm telling you, because I just cut through with the agent's office again, someone will need to, could be you, will need to do the training, and then by January first of every year, say to them, we have a person to deal with any requests under open records for the open meetings, because of the town employees.
Okay. Further discussion?
You said that, based on Juliana's discussion, there was an estimate of fifteen thousand, but the EMA haven't attacked it, so it's twenty to thirty?
Yeah, the old act will be twenty thousand dollars, but be fifty thousand kicking.
The grant is for twenty thousand, or fifteen, twenty thousand dollars will cost it there, and seventy-five percent comes from the FEMA or REMA, and twenty-five percent has to come from the town. The grant application will be twenty thousand dollars. But it will be in there, only fifty thousand dollars will come from the REMA or FEMA, and five thousand dollars from the ...
What if the plan, because this range is between twenty and thirty, if it's staying up to one, but if it comes to thirty thousand dollars, what, it's ten thousand dollars in that, or two thousand dollars?
He just said, he's typically ranging twenty to thirty, and further in the analysis, half the topic, the firm's expert, we suggest Foster, trust, the good line.
I wish.
We did, we did start, it looks like, to prepare and update in two thousand and ten.
Two years old.
So there's something already starting with, and that's why when I talked to the HPHC last year, they said, no. My question would be to those that would be involved, do you feel you have the time?
We have time.
I'm thinking, I realize you're always out of time.
We have time.
But Mrs. King and Mr. Cardillo, the police, if they have the time to put into this, with their work schedule already.
We have, and we get the grant, we have three years' time to put the plan together, and so we need to put the remand and the FEMA, so the three-year process.
Three weeks.
So what will be done in this year, we have three years' time to do this.
I would still ask if they feel they have the time to put into that.
It shouldn't be a matter of time from the community. I know the town was just reimbursed about four hundred thousand dollars for the bridge on Langley Road. Without these plans, without the training, as I mentioned before, without these plans in place, the town is liable to get nothing, eventually. It could be reimbursed for a million paper clips, if we have that training, but without these plans in place, eventually, the federal government is going to make an example out of municipalities like Boston.
Thank you.
And also, with the plan in place, we can apply for grants, for flood protection, this means we can repair bridges before they get damaged, we can repair things, we can do things with money, what is on the state, out from the government, what is there, but we have to have the plan in place, we are paying for, apply for this grant.
Thank you.
I believe we are out of time, so we have to act on this tonight, right?
Yes.
Just want to make that, because we can't, we're going to move forward, we can't delay it anymore. This is the deadline, the grant is, what we ...
Further discussion? Any none, all those in favor of authorizing the to-go hack for this grant, also? I'm about to say aye. Aye. Motion unanimously. Decision disposition of police station bond, I'm going to accuse myself from this.
So we have the flowers from the planning department, the Board on Historical Preservation and Hurry Commission, programming agreement summary. Juliana?
I have this on the list.
This is the police ...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We give you a lot of presentation when you walk into an additional theater, with any guidance.
Sorry about that. Okay, so this is in regard to the Foster Preservation Society. It says, our council members, the society was recently made aware of the possibility of a transfer of ownership of the historic bond located south of the current police station on Howard Hill Road. The information related was that the society would be allowed to restore the building on its current site, and that the town foster would retain ownership of the land upon which the bond is located. This information was presented to the board of directors at their monthly meeting on February ninth, and it was unanimously voted to accept the offer of transfer if the town council adopts this measure. The society feels that it would be in a position to secure grant support, to undertake the restoration of the structure, if they had an ownership position in the building. The society has needed expanded storage for their growing collection of items that are too large for inclusion in our office museum at the townhouse, and the location in the heart of one of Foster's historic districts presents an ideal location and environment for this purpose. We appreciate the council's consideration in this matter. Respectfully, E. D. Robinson, June President. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to the discussion. I'll go back over this. Quick motion, discussion, we have a transfer of the ownership of the historic model located at the current police station on Hollow Hill Road, and the town maintained ownership. I think that's basically what it was, that's right.
Property of the property.
Taken ownership of the land of Howard's, the bond located.
What's second?
Just so we have clarification of how we got to where we're at, if you mind.
No, go ahead, I have that's my expression.
There were money set aside at financial meeting to repair or fix the bond at the police station. They were not used, don't expect pretty much condemnation for use, if I'm not mistaken. So it cannot be used, it's actually falling down. Some of the money was used to, there's not that point in it, we got a quote of ninety thousand dollars to completely repair it, or ten thousand dollars just to shore it up. So, at one of the recent meetings, we decided to see if the Preservation Society would have any interest in taking the bond over, and saving it from being, falling in, and costing us a lot of money with this. So, that's where we're at, and that's why this letter is important.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just, how is it to be structured, to convey the building, but being a land manager? I mean, OLESE might be the easiest way to do that, but I'm not sure if that's what ...
I don't know if the Preservation Society can do that through OLESE, because they don't want to have to grant money, so they, and Mr. Roberts can speak to that, they may have to retain ownership of the building to be eligible for the grants, to repair the building, and I'm just shooting from the head on this concern, like, I have to clarify this one.
Yes, we had explored trying to get grant money to purchase property, or to restore it. The only one that we have gotten grant money for was the blacksmith's shop, which sits on town land, but belongs to the Preservation Society. So this is pretty much following in an established act, and Gordon's right, we need to have ownership in the building in order to secure grant money.
What would be of concern to you? Well, I'm just wondering, also, with the blacksmith's shop, how is it, how is the ownership evident?
The blacksmith's shop, the building was donated to the society. It was located on a farm on Windsor Road. They got a grant from the Champwood Foundation, disassembled the shop, got permission from the town, and assembled it where it is, which is basically the cornerstone of our museum, as it were. But now I've got a sleigh in George Newman's shed, and I've got a chowder pot downstairs that we haven't restored, that is huge. And, you know, we have items that are just too big to work with the U.S. But as far as the building, there are precedents in other towns as well, where the town owns the land, or somebody else does. The building that was just restored in Chapachit, propped under it once, is cemetery. But the building is with the Historical Society.
Uh, you know, the blacksmith's shop, Preservation Society ensures that it's not owned by the town, so, you know, they take over that responsibility. I'm pretty sure we turn it to ... Don't we pay insurance?
We do.
We do.
Pay a lot of insurance.
I won't share.
You might be paying the liability, though, because it's on town grounds.
So what will we do for this property, for that?
I don't know if they intend to move it at all, or to keep it in place.
No, we tend to keep it in place.
So you may not ...
It's on the National Historic Register.
I'm going to ask one other question, also. Would that pay or anything with Mark, now, so would you be comfortable with that, or not, I'm not sure. And again, I'd appreciate, I know it's a little long, so. I'd like to add, again, it is falling down, and with the shame to just ignore it, coming under the rug, and it pretty much winds up in a dumpster, so, I think, this is my, you know, valid suspicion in evidence.
I just want to point out one issue, also. John, just hear me out a minute. I have reviewed for the first item of new business, something that has to do with the round historical preservation, and that this building, if you do not dispose of it prior to reaching this next item, and maybe even if you do, would be covered under their regulations if you were also to sign that agreement. And they're going to want to come out, they're going to want to look at it, they want to do environmental impact studies you'll have to do, and they're going to tell you why you can and can't do it. So just keep that in mind, because that's going to dovetail right into that first. I can ...
I know, Mr. Roberts, I heard you first.
I was just, I was just wondering, Mr. Resibo, was your point, will they be leasing the land under the building? Is that what you were trying to get at?
Well, yeah, because I don't have any ...
Okay.
It's a great idea of preservation.
That's what I thought you were trying to ask.
I wasn't sure what, how would you document it? If they lease it, if they get leased, if it's a condo, there's a couple of ways to structure it, I just didn't know what exactly it was.
I, I think that should be discussed. I don't know how much time you have here. It should be discussed, because that, like I said, is going to throw you into several other regulations. If you're keeping it, if you're, you know, allowing them to restore something, you have any ownership interested in it all, and you sign this next agreement, I think you're going to have to deal with historical preservation in that way. And if you look at the new agreement, it's a lot of environmental impact studies, and I don't know if you've looked at that. Don't they do ... Both on the same agenda.
Don't they do leases for like a dollar?
You can't ...
Or something like that, that, and, and ...
That's not the worry. The worry is, do you own it or not? And if you do, and even if they do, if we sign that next agreement that's under new business, could change what you can do with it, or how. Let's just pause it over.
In this regard, years ago, Gordon and I were going to try to move the, the old police station over here, and this should be, after this, should be followed through that Preservation Society take ownership of the old jailhouse, too. And it was originally over here someplace, it moved to that site, and most people don't even know it exists, and it's over there with the three-holter, the jail cell, and everything, so that's something else. This goes through the Preservation, should follow through with that.
Thank you.
We're going to turn it down a little.
Mrs. Roberts. Again, in order for it to benefit the Preservation Society, outside of the fact that we want it restored, because it is part of the historical, National Historical District, if we don't have ownership, we can't get any money to restore it. I mean, that's just a fact. And as far as, I mean, I'm not sure what the whole preservation thingy coming up is, but I, well, I don't think preservation would have any problem dealing with these people, because we plan on restoring it as it would have been. So jumping through hoops isn't a problem.
We might, we might ask the planner, I don't know if she's discussed with anybody any further than that other agreement, if you think it would have any effect on this.
It's not our agreement, but it, they would be applying under the same program. Usually, something like that would attack and go to the HPHC, because it is on the national legislature, prior to commencing any work, so that ...
So it's not adding anything to them, is what they normally do?
No.
Even if they don't apply to this program, even if they apply to other programs?
This is separate. Mr. Roberts, would you, um, do you remember who the votes were, did you say ...
Yeah, it was pretty much ...
... settling to them, or you didn't need to then, I don't remember.
The motion was to give them the ownership of the building in the town to retain the property and the land, pretty much what I was saying, transfer ownership of the historic bond located at our police station, and that the town would retain ownership of land upon which the bonds located.
Okay. So by transferring it, would that ... You're going to have to transfer ownership of the building itself, and I would suggest if you want to do anything to the land, you're going to need to have a financial town meeting, if you're giving ... to give away land in any way.
We're not, we're...
Right. So I mean, if you're thinking...
We're still owning the land.
Okay.
We're still owning, according to the motion...
Right, that's fine.
...motion, we're owning the land, but we're transferring the building, so that would cover everything.
And the only effect would be potential insurance that you have to keep because of the liability.
And I'm sure they would maintain insurance and...
Yeah.
Which we do with other...
Mm-hmm.
Other.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Thank you.
That's a...
Thank you. Guys, help us, more help for justice.
Good luck with that.
Is there a document in this office? So where's the monitoring records that's in the model? Because I'm very sure that they have to do that. Ensure that building, not just the liability, so you don't, which will be very legal.
Oh, yeah, we're going to have to draft something to them. I'm going to have to draft something to them that appears to be like a home of its need, and that it don't have to be recorded, so.
I'll have to operate it to track for, so that I can have a...
Oh, yeah.
All the same point, to move that property from the...
They may be identifying themselves, because they only draw...
I'm not sure.
During...
You don't want to make some decisions that have to be able to...
In the end, that's still on, you know.
Jane, can you make sure you know that that there will be some sort of legal document? Thank you.
Have we done with discussion now?
So come on.
Mr. Lewis, we are done.
Okay. And on the agenda is a report from Prism Streetlight, our mission report, and...
This is President, member of the council, congratulations to you, a council member. I provided to the clerk a copy of our preliminary streetlight report. In summary, Prism is a not-for-profit collaboration of municipalities and fire districts to reduce the eight million dollars in excess cost to National Grid. So if you buy our streetlights, we're going to save you money. On the first page, on the second page of the report, you have a current bill of about forty-one hundred and twenty-six dollars for your current streetlights, that's for seventeen streetlights. If Prism takes over the maintenance of the streetlight, on the top of page three, you save thirty percent, so you save eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars by Prism doing maintenance. The purchase price in the next paragraph is about eleven hundred and fifty dollars, so your payback there is about a year and three months, if you just let us do the maintenance. However, if you increase to LED lights, LED lights are better quality of life, cheaper to run, and there are rebates from the Energy Resources Office at the state, you can save seventy percent on power bills. So that gets you to thirty-three hundred and fifty-eight dollars of savings annually out of your four thousand dollars. In addition, you receive about seventeen hundred and fifty dollars in rebates from where we are. That's a one-time rebate. The LED lights are warranted for ten years, and should you do intelligent controls, which I'll talk about in a minute, they're also warranted by Prism for ten years. So there should be no cost to town for maintenance. If you look on page four, the first paragraph, we recommend strongly that you dim the lights from eleven o'clock P.M. until five o'clock in the morning by fifty percent. The human eye cannot detect a reduction in LED lights of thirty percent. So it'll be minimal impact to your residents and your taxpayers, and it also provides you a savings of forty, thirty-four hundred dollars, and the increase in the incentives to almost eighteen hundred dollars, to as much as thirty-five hundred dollars. Thirty-five hundred dollars would be for intelligent controls. It's interesting that we found a poll that is turned off from your bills, you're paying for it, on poll one fifty in the annuals and growth. So on the next page, you'll see, I'm talking about page five, the current cost, you're going to save eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Control rate, which is just a plain LED, is fifty-one hundred dollars, equals the nighttime dimming, is seven thousand dollars in terms of savings. Now, you're spending four thousand dollars, so we're actually delivering savings to you. The cost for the system, let me find that number for you. This is National Grid number in two thousand and thirteen, is eleven hundred and forty-eight dollars. So you can see, if you're saving seven thousand dollars, I'm sorry, if the one-time, the savings is thirty-four hundred dollars, the one-time incentive is, with partly done, the streetlights is thirty-five hundred, you're saving seven thousand dollars for a fourteen hundred dollar investment. Over ten years, that becomes a thirty thousand dollar savings for the town and foster. So this, on page six, you'll see that on our preliminary report, you pay seventeen dollars for this report, we're saving you in the first paragraph, a hundred and twenty-one dollars because ninety-three dollars overcharge them on two lights. You've already made money by doing business with Prism and investing the seventeen dollars. You're also paying ninety-three dollars per year for a light that's been red capped and turned off on the annuals and growth, which I just spoke about. So this is the phase one report. Our recommendation to the town council is for you to approve the phase one report, to prepare a letter that I've forwarded to the town council president, to purchase the lights, and to proceed to phase two, which has two parts. The phase two part is to audit the lights, so it's eight dollars a light to audit, which means we send people out, look at the light, verify the audit of the light, make sure that the light is still there, make sure the red cap is noted, and so that when we negotiate on your behalf, National Grid, you achieve all the value of that. That cost is a hundred and thirty-six dollars, which is eight dollars a light for seventeen lights. Then the second part of the phase two report is for us to prepare a procurement list for a hundred dollars and to prepare a design, which would entail putting the proper LED value on the streetlights by taking the streetlights down. So the total cost for your phase two is three hundred and thirty-six dollars, and my recommendation, and hopefully with your approval tonight, you would move forward with phase two, for a total of three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Anybody else from the council?
Take a motion.
Take a motion and reject. Prism proposal concluded him, lights from eleven P.M. to five A.M. with the LED and the intelligent controller, concluded the proposed phase one, purchase move to phase two. Any questions?
No, I think your presentation saved us money. We're like you, we're just... The third time you've had a phone call, Mr. Roberts.
Yes, sir.
Not just walking in, shooting from the head, that meetings with him before.
And also the president, Colonel Towne Towne. There you go. So I'm passing in your chairs, many thanks. Completely satisfied with your presentation, Colonel Towne. Any discussion?
I know we recently added some lights. Are those included in there?
No, they won't be, because we're not the heart of those. And the other was the street, and we love to move the podium in place. The DPW director did contact me about that. As National Grid, in Providence, for example, we're saving Providence twenty-four million dollars over ten years, and the value of Providence, being a Prism member, is that economy scaling, moves to your town. There were two lights discussed, one of the fire, that we have on the bottom of our project, but the only one that's added and be part of this would be the one, I think we wanted to place that issue publicly. But we can work with whoever my point of contact is in the town, we can get that under control.
Questions or discussion?
The law says streetlight on the foster center of the fire station, and it got removed. Don't have to amend, be replaced, or like all the fire services there for that.
So if the town wishes to add additional...
Really, we can conduct that test.
After phase two, or what portion does that?
Uh, we should buy our streetlights first, and then we can retain yourself. You know, if... We asked National Grid in Providence on June twenty-seventh to purchase the inventory, and that's just coming down this week. So they're dragging it up a little bit. But I'm sure with our urging, shall I say, that that will be faster, but it's longer than sixty days. That's why we suggest the DPW director to go ahead and get that light installed by National Grid, because it's just taken so long for National Grid to bomb to our needs. Just to add that, some years ago, the council, two of the police teams looked over several of the streetlights in town, because we got a three-story building, and we saved thousands of dollars by separating some and not turning them back out, which was some of the fire pumps. At that time, at that discussion, the fire pumps put on motion detector lights, because you may not get a call three weeks at night, so the fire pumps went ahead of that. When you pull in, the lights turn on versus came for a light that, so a lot of the fire stations were aware of it at the time, and switched over to motion detector lights on their buildings. And we can work with the fire district, too, if they want to convert LEDs into motion lights. Seventy percent savings with LEDs, this is the power.
Okay, I'm just looking over this letter. There are some things in the letter that weren't specifically needed in motion. I just want to amend the motion to include signing off on this.
Shoot. Yep. Come in.
Okay, I'll make a motion, amend it to the main motion, to authorize the president of the company to sign off on this, presented by Mr. Lee.
Second amendment.
Second amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Back to the main motion, any discussion? Any discussion? Do you not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we understand.
Thank you. Thank you. Before the work of the council...
So I signed it, but I'm going to read it to the town board.
Aye.
It's the only one.
Okay.
Does she make a copy of it, or...
We, you'll need one, one of the original...
Well, I have two.
Yeah, I got the right...
If you have notice to...
Yeah. If the president wants to sign one.
Two of them, I'll sign them up. That's my... Okay, so we both, if I can go back, if we have the first part assigned.
I'll forward it back to you, and we'll return it. Is that four? So... I'll...
I just ask, if I want to go here, if I put these over the heads, who...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much.
Shine your shit.
Because the originals both being signatures. Copies of, I have a photo of it.
You know, it's a...
It's a photo of it. Think if you could, you know, what you have in...
Just you guys... Police station.
This is next.
Yes, sir.
The solicitor would like to get a photocopy of one of those documents before you take them.
Sure.
And Chief, can we, you know, can we ask you to go to the police station, get copies and leave it there? Do you know what the registration?
Yes, sir.
You can just...
Do you want to, well, just photocopy one, or you want, either keep one or have a copy?
Wait for it. The president have one. This is the photocopy.
Would you prefer it, the original or photocopy?
I prefer an original.
Okay, figure it out.
Thank you.
So, I'll send another one for... Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item, first new business, our HPHC programmatic agreement. We have this in front of us, and...
If you might recall, the housing we have is now structured slightly differently, so that it's a, it appears in a contract, it's a zero line item, to point that, instead of asking for a certain amount of money and not using seventy-five percent of it, having it returned to the state, will apply to the state on a case-by-case basis, as homeowners apply in part of the housing we have, program has worked done to their house. But because we're doing it that way, the environmental review report that we would normally do that encompasses all of the subsequent activities, won't cover the housing we have activity, because we don't have any addresses yet. So this programmatic agreement includes pro forma from the HPHC, they send it out to all the municipalities that have housing we have activities that are going about it this way, and just, it's a formality where the town is saying that if we get to that point, we will do the environmental review report on each address, and as part of that, send you notification of the address, so that they can say, yep, you're not restoring the property.
So they require signing off on this contract, or participate in the certification?
Correct. So even if we got to the point of the overall contract, and you voted yes on it, we still wouldn't be able to do anything with the housing we have, and we didn't have a programmatic agreement, I think, on the state. Just like they say, they won't give you the funds after you sign the contract unless you've done the environment.
Would they, have they had the authority to look this over?
They have. Without making a policy decision, the point is, they never do something for nothing. So the issue is, they're looking for a separate confirmation that you're going to do this, and if it happens that you don't, this is their recourse. So, I mean, I suggest that we always follow whatever they give us, as long as we have people here that are knowledgeable and understand they have to comply with what they're asking.
They're going to do what, exactly?
You're reporting to them each property.
You don't have to do, I already have to do an overall environmental review report, you just basically do certain sites that the state said they're supposed to use to prove that it's overall, if that was flood zone, there's no rare endangerment species on the property, all that sort of stuff, and that concludes notification to the HPHC, and that will be, you know, historic properties and sites.
My guess is, it's not getting done, so they're trying to force you to look at this and see it, maybe not with us, but other cities and towns are not reporting it.
They didn't used to have to do this when it was, you were applying for a certain amount of money in capitalistic addresses, that was following the overall program, but now that it's a zero line item, assuming on a case-by-case basis, they have to come up to this programmatic agreement, because they have nothing to review when they met our application.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, it's, I was just wondering about something. It's historical preservation, but they're just talking about the land of destructions?
So overall, is the, if the overall thing are some historic... So overall, is the, if the overall thing are some historic sites and there are historic buildings, most of our projects are structures. But if somebody's compliant for the assistance, for the historic, which is knowledgeable, which has a difference in their ability to get funds or? It, it won't make a difference in their ability to make funds, but if it's an historic home and the HPHC will just want, because no, they're already wanting, no kind of work is known to be done. And would you, they just want to be notified of that. And you would have, you would have that information and you'd send to them because you wouldn't, it would be part of the homeowner's application.
Would they be restricting some of the historic home to only a certain kind of, who does a, who does a, who now would, that would still?
Hey, what's the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion to approve?
I guess I still have more questions because it talks a lot about consulting with Rhode Island State Store and the United States. But I'm not sure what they consult us on. I mean, it talks about archaeological sites and building everywhere. It probably is fifty years old, it would probably not be that much of a topic to talk about. But what do they, what do they recommend?
They just want to be notified of the work that's been up for the particular address and be given the maps that I would come and make for the environment. Include stuff like archaeological sites.
And that's only instances where the homeowner has elected to get these funds?
Yeah, when the homeowner has applied for funds for work on their particular program.
So if you're not applying to this program?
Then it doesn't sound appropriate.
And so if we accept it, homeowners are paying you.
Correct.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement. Rhode Island Historic Preservation Area Commission, approving that agreement.
Seven.
Discussion? You're done, all of the data?
Aye.
Aye, motion very unanimous. If you don't have a visual, I'll just say, uh...
I have a visual, I know.
So... Next item on the agenda. Put on four unknown of the recreation field. I've got this information, actually I did copy it directly on the table, although I see it might have more of us as far as, than it is.
Do you need a copy of the room?
Yes, yes. So I'm, I'm going to just go through the timeline on this, on the recreation field election. In the spring of two thousand eight, the town council at that time signed a purchase and sales agreement to purchase this seven plus acres of property on Foster Center Road diagonally across from the painting school. The purchase and sales agreement was contingent upon three things. Approval by the financial town meeting, contingent upon receiving DEM rent monies, which were a discussion at the time, and contingent upon closing after, not only for June thirtieth of two thousand eight. So it was nicely planned in this, this process. So the proof, purchase was approved by the council spring two thousand eight. On May sixth, two thousand eight, the purchase was presented to and approved by the financial town meeting. Purchase price was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, of which the DEM, Rhode Island DEM provided recreational ramps for the town among seventy-five thousand units. So DEM paid seventy-five thousand dollars, the town paid the dollars and some additional appraisal costs and acquisition costs. The town took ownership of this property in June two thousand eight. In July two thousand nine, Corsman Engineering and the Gifford Design Group presented plans to the town planning board. So that's essentially what you see here, has been updated since then. There was initial plans and the engineering company and landscape design company that indicated. It was presented to the planning board again July two thousand nine. In October of two thousand nine, the DEM stands and approves the plans, the entire package of plans. Uh, DEM permit number oh-nine dash zero-two-two-zero, so DEM has muted some of the plans. February seventh, twenty-ten, the planning board unanimously approved site development, uh, these plans unanimously six to nothing. On April twenty-sixth, twenty-ten, the site plan was recorded in the town hall hall. So two thousand eight through two thousand ten is the point where nothing happened for a couple of years. Beginning in two thousand twelve, the town began acquisition of equipment through the Lesso program that would provide us with the equipment needed to develop the field. We use large trucks, trucks with jackhammer attachments and bulldozers. October twenty-seventh, twenty-fifteen, there was an update to the plan that the DOT wanted in order to issue the driveway permit in order to have a fence around the part of the front border. And that was done for the town by Corsman Engineering, had no cost. January tw- twenty-sixteen, after the driveway permit was issued, the DPW began work on the driveway as permitted in preparation for repairing field for phase one development. So you can see on the plan that I handed out, there's how it runs, it goes down the center. It's shown phase one to the left, which includes a little field on the bottom line. Phase two to the right, which includes essentially the football sign. So that was begun in, uh, just, just last month, opening up a driveway. The work is just on progress, we're beginning in the road there. And the plans are being followed by the public works. So that is, that brings us up to date, so. I understand there are some questions.
Yeah, who would have instructed the DPW to start the project and why wasn't it brought in front of the council?
It's not brought in front of the council because the financial town meeting authorized construction of this. The planning board did the plans and it's not, uh, it's not right for council decision. It was approved by the council in two thousand eight. It was approved by the financial town meeting in two thousand eight and it was approved by the planning board in two thousand ten. This plan is beyond this council and it is just to the point where what has been a process for eight years is not being used.
Got several questions. So they just took the time themselves to start the project on a run, correct? Because I don't think there's a single person on this council that was aware that the DPW was going to be starting that unless, Mr. Stevens, did you know they were going to be commencing on that job? Did they?
No.
John, did you?
Of course I did. And I also know for a fact that the police chief had spoken both you and Denise and told the people who wanted to start opening up that field. I know that for a fact.
So as somebody who's in construction, uh, it's common currency when we do that, we should have all been informed. And now with that, the neighbors should have informed, uh, as a currency issue that we were going to start in the book. They're just as important as us, as are the taxpayers. So I wasn't aware of it, I filled a lot of phone calls, uh, I couldn't answer it, couldn't answer them. And I should be able to answer them, so. So five member council, whether it was done in the past or not, we just discussed the police bond over there. That was approved by the taxpayers to spend ten thousand dollars and things. And it was never done, but that money was used to partially hire an outside firm, clean the police station.
Reality.
Realistic. By the council, yes. Uh, and some of the reasons were because our DPW didn't have the time to do it correctly and properly when it needed to be done. And you know that discussion clearly, so we used the money that was approved to be fixing the bond by, by, by the taxpayers for something else. Uh, stress, DPW couldn't handle it. So how are we finding the time to put DPW in here and work on this project right here, which is a ball field, a soccer field, basketball courts, football field, walking track, fences? And you mentioned we have the equipment to do this job, to do it. Not correctly we don't. And the last thing that you want to bring in when you start a job, which is totally wooden, is a twenty-ton bulldozer. It wasn't done correctly, this is going to cost us more money to fix, but was poorly done, poorly started, and that wasn't brought to the council. I want to know what the plan is. Is our DPW going to tackle that whole job?
Well, that, that's your opinion that they're not doing it. I mean, we've consulted the construction companies who say it's been done just fine. I know the DPW director has accessed, um, federal government websites that discuss how to develop land, especially in rural areas. And it's been, perfectly in compliance with those standards. How is the DPW going to, are they going to do this whole thing? I don't believe that this whole field, this whole development is within the ability of the public works to accommodate. But I do know they can remove trees and they can put in driveways and a carton of, and it's great. So what, what is the plan? The plan is for DPW to do what it is able to do. They have the skills, they have the knowledge, they have the equipment. It is not costing the town anything, we're not bringing in a developer to do it. But there may truly be something in the future. I mean, that they're going to be able to build the drainage farm that was located in the back. So there are certainly things that we have to come in front of the council, be a rester in the budget process, be presented to the financial town meeting, get capital expenses. But after sitting on the shelf for eight years, a project that's been approved by the council, this council, by the council? By the financial town meeting, by the planning board, by the DEM and by the DOT, it's done and it shouldn't be obstructed.
Well, I sat through, actually Corsman presented this, so I kind of had a heads up on what this project was detailed and scoped for the installation of it, because I'm familiar with working with things like this. And originally I had put this on the agenda because it's to be updated on what was going on. We've gone a little bit further than, as you portrayed, just opening up a driveway. We're far beyond that. And I will tell you, you mentioned we have the machinery, we have the knowledge to do this. What first should have been done is notifying the neighbors that work is going to be commencing and maybe put something out in the paper or something or somewhere. That would have been, um, I, I had, I didn't respond to this. Again, before I was so rudely interrupted, that would have been one of the first things to do. Now, knowing construction, doing it every day, the next thing we would have did was we would have hired a forester to go in there and estimate the value of the timber that was in the problem. That wasn't done, so when that wasn't done, uh, which should have been, the next thing would have been with having a company go in and harvest that lumber from profit because it is the taxpayers' money, at which point you could have bargained off some of the grain claring and the chipping of the material. And once that was done, you would have had to, and again, if you know anything about site plans, you're going to realize, apparently, are you working on clearing phase one first, John? Which would be this side of the blueprint, if you look at the big ones a little bit easier?
Yes, phase one. Phase one comes before phase two.
Okay, so knowing that, looking at your elevations, where's the highest ground, where's the lowest ground from right from north and south on that project? Go along.
That is up to, see, grading is not nothing. Grading is what the DPW is going to do. Now, let me correct some of the things that you said.
Well, you, yeah, there were more things I just want to touch on. The next phase, after the forest went in, after...
I had to correct you.
No, I'm not, but you, but you, you said, I think it's funny. You didn't take your notes like I did and then respond back. So after the forester went in, you probably could have bargained off some of the, the loan for the clings of the lot. Then you would have gone to removing the stumps and the boulders that were in the way, which would have been done with an excavator, which would have to separate down from the soil. And then after that, you would have had to strip the loom and subsoil and place it to the other side because once we get done with the project, we're going to need a lot of loom and subsoil to plant the grass on. So instead of what was done, was completely mix all the loom and subsoil together, didn't separate. Actually took rocks, boulders, which should have been separated, came with a jackhammer up to a smaller size, pulled out all of the stuff. Uh, material was pushed down the hill to where there has to be filled, so. And it's probably about, or even the prints backing it up, it's probably about a ten-foot elevation drop that was simply rolled down the hill. So this project, if it was brought in front of the council, this stuff would have been probably brought up and you would have seen the procedure and it wouldn't have gone away and went, so. We are, we are way off track and it's, uh, we're into, where we may have saves, uh, may have, whatever money we would have saved, it's going to cost a lot more to fix what was done there, the breaking we were achieving.
Okay, so I'm glad you're right. So your financial speculation, I believe, is simply that speculation. Was it foot, was it advertised? It was in the Costa Home Journal, it was in the last article that I wrote, Costa Home Journal, under the sub, under the heading Recreation. Listed everything that was done in Recreation this past year was done at the Woody Law Center, the installation of the exercise equipment down there and the fact that we're going to begin opening up a little bit of field. So you say it was not totally to the public? Well, Costa Home Journal goes to the home, every single person that lives in town, so it was. You, you talked about a forester. Shoot, did we get a forester? Yes, we did get a forester. J.R. Vinagro Lobbie, Joe Vinagro Jr., president, came out to the site. He's the individual who did the logging of the hill behind Johnston, uh, in Johnston with all the deposits. He cleared that, that's firm. He stated, "There is very little good wood on this property, it is only good for firewood. The trees are stalking, it's full of shakes and it's no good for firewood. If you saw the trees, there's an oak here, there's an oak there, and everything else is just all stalking pine." The forester visited, the forester told us there is little value except for firewood. And actually, that's what I'm going to propose we do with it, when we get further on the agenda, that we actually use it as firewood. Give it to, you know, pay the town, because that was the recommendation. Give it to the people in the town who have blue soaps and they can use it for firewood. That's a financial benefit for people in the town.
My other question.
You talked about the material being moved and being moved appropriately. And you had said to me earlier, it shouldn't be moved twice. But you know, I see, uh, after I have dinner, what do we do with the dishes? We don't just throw them back in the cupboard. No, they go from the table to the sink and they sit there for, and they go from the sink to the strainer and they sit there for, and then they go from the strainer back into the, into the cupboard.
So where's what?
There is a process going on over there. And when you go out and at the end of the day, the logs are put to one side because they need to be out of the way. And now, okay, there's a pile of logs and it's unpalatable to you, like a pile of tissues in the sink. But they will end up where they need to be. You have to move things to the left and move things to the right.
As I have.
Can I correct one stage?
I got some photos actually from Providence.
The, go on, can I just correct you? It was my advice that the DPW not clean the police station because we discussed, if you recall, bloodborne pathogens. And I didn't want union workers told to handle such a thing and end up with a complaint. So that was me.
So you mentioned...
It looks to me like they're, they're clearing these plants. That's a real shot.
So...
They're great, I'm glad you documented it.
Again, to do something more, so you can explain to me where the loom and subsoil that you stripped off and separated? Where the stumps are separated and where the logs are separated, the stick piles and where the logs are? Because these pictures show...
You can see the stumps, you've got a picture of them.
Yeah, I'm going to show you, stumps, rocks, no loom, no subsoil. This is the entrance out to Route ninety-four. Now, anybody, if anybody knows anything about entrances, rock and trap, trap rock have to be put in so the dirt and mud don't travel out if the street trucks come in and out. Also, because there is gravel there, after a rainy day, you walked in, you couldn't be into a foot of mud, when you walked in... When you walked in there, you weren't a foot of mud because the loom and the subsoil, which bulldozed half, half of it. I have never seen, and I have been on hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of sites that stop at this level. And I have never seen the first piece of equipment as a DEA. And if you can find me any project that starts like this, that the first piece of equipment you put in is a twenty-ton bulldozer, I'll give you a whole week's pay that I made.
Well, we'll get the website and the kind of documents together someday and we can write you a check. So, talking about this first picture that you talked about, yes, it's money, of course it's money, of course it's money. They opened up the driveway. And is there going to be rock there? Absolutely. In the plan, there is a driveway plan that calls for a cloth barrier to be put down and then rock on top of it. Well, you can't put the rock down until you put it in line.
And driveway is not in yet. When you do a job site, you strip the loom and subsoil, you immediately drop below the trap rock and fill the fabric underneath it. And you have to constantly work that because the mud mixes up with that. You have to keep that clean by either running around, moving it around, so the dirt drops back to the bottom. That's the first thing you do. They've already gone to clearing and pulled equipment in and out of there and it has not been done.
It's my understanding that the cloth fabric.
Can't be.
The fabric has already been.
You're talking about silvers, I'm talking about building the fabric at the end.
I'm not talking about the silk fence. The silk fence is there, where it used to be. I'm talking about the cloth that goes underneath the rock and the driveway. And it's mentioned, it's called two different things. It's called porous fabric. And it's also called cheap.
But water runs through.
It's called both of those things. Well, they're not exactly the same thing, they're two different things. So, the building inspector, who's in charge of monitoring these erosion controls and ensuring compliance, not you by the way, the building inspector, took the plan, called DEM, called Crossman Engineering to get the clarification for the fabric that's supposed to be done. He's got the clarification, the fabric will be put down, and the rocks will be there. By noon the next week, no doubt. The message is already made. The plans are being followed. There are plans. It's obvious you don't like the plans. It's obvious that you're in opposition to developing.
Absolutely not. Absolutely. So, my next question is, you just said the plans are being followed.
Yes.
You're going to tell me, if you look at page, let's go look at page, silvers, we're going to talk about silvers.
Yes.
C five. So, you're telling me that the entire string of silvers that's up there is absolutely installed correctly. They have the tails buried underneath, they're staked in, the silvers tails, they cover tracks, they lay the silvers, and they covered the tail of the silvers so one of the erosion doesn't leave the site.
I'm telling you, so I need to go out there and look.
I did, I did. And I found out that it was done correctly. The silvers is not footing correctly.
But so did our building inspector, he said there is no problem, and he's the person who makes the decision. The silvers has been installed in all areas where the digging is taken place, in all areas where it is appropriate to be in place at this point, like it was inspected. He said it was fine, he didn't see any problems. I spoke to him personally, Mr. Franco spoke to him personally yesterday. He said there are no problems on that site with the erosion control.
I'll meet him up there next week and I will show him a part of it, see if he confirms.
And if you do find an issue, then it will be corrected. Be assured of that. If you find an issue with the silvers, it'll be corrected. If you find an issue with anything, it'll be corrected. That's what we do. We take the plan that's been approved at all levels of this town and we follow it. And if there's an issue, who knows, maybe we'll hit Ben Rock and have to do something that we didn't expect. Then you alter the plans you addressed on Sunday. Mr. Lewis.
Mrs. Vazio. You know, I'd like to point out to the people that are here, this is what our council does, okay? I brought up the fact of the financial stability of the community. You've needed a police station, excuse me? You've needed a police station for ten years. If you'd like to have a discussion with me, I'd be more than happy. You need, the old, the new townhouse has needed construction and work for five years, okay? You needed to buy two highway trucks this year, you couldn't afford $150,000. What's your estimate of a police station? Two or three million dollars? And you're arguing about prep, work on the financial stability of this community. And Gordon's a good friend of mine, known John for years, have no problem with anybody, but you saved $3,000 bucks, that's what you worry, you're bad electricity, you're worried about $10,000 worth of lobs if they're there, and you're short about four million.
My concern is a project don't go in correctly, that's my sole concern.
And my concern also, it will go in.
It needs to go.
It needs to. So, if there's an issue, you see an issue? I'll be happy. We go out there together and we'll sort it out. Mrs. Ryder.
I just have two questions you could ask Mr. Rogers. When police chiefs informed both you and Mrs. DeFranco that this work was going to be done, which I assume was before the article that was in the Post Home Journal, why did you not start asking questions then? That's question number one. Number two, is it your intention to stop this project, because I know for a fact you were never in favor of it, or to prolong it? I mean, this has been, as Mr. Lewis said, eight years. When you took office as president of the council, nothing was done.
Just turn it in a little bit, attack Mr. Lewis. You've got a lot of this.
He's asking you a question.
The town has not expended any one. They didn't, they haven't gone out and contracted with anyone to do this. There was no, no need for authorization of funds to be used for that. This is the beginning. Starting a project that has been just lagging and laying behind for eight years, one that was approved, you took money from the taxpayers for a project, it is expected that the project will be done. Not, again, another opportunity lost. Just do it and get over it.
All right. To answer the question is, again, apparently somebody wasn't listening when I said, "When the project is started, the whole council should be aware of..." I brought up the date on it. And in my opinion, I've asked my three council members that are sitting here, they weren't informed of it, they weren't aware of it, so that was my first problem. Apparently, somebody wasn't listening when I said, "I want to make sure if we do a project, it gets done correctly instead of inappropriately."
Well, I have a second question.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes?
I am not in opposition to this field, as we discussed on Sunday. I do have some questions though. The engineer, Crossman Engineering, and the Gifford Design Group, what is the scope of their part in this field? Are they going to be overseeing at any point? Will they be, is there a contract with them, and was that contract, are they not privy to that contract?
The scope was to develop plans.
Develop plans? So, they will not be doing the landscaping that we see within here? They will not be doing anything? Will they be checking periodically? Do we have access to them for any technical questions?
Okay, so, one question at a time. Do we have access to them for any technical questions? Yes. In fact, when DOT wanted something tweaked, we could.
Yes, I see that.
They were called, and they made those adjustments at no additional cost. So, are they available for consultation? Yes.
Will they be in additional costs at some point? Do you know at this point?
Would not be my intention to be any additional cost. If we have those engineers come out and do work, well, obviously. But at this point, the only thing that these individual firms have been engaged for is the back of 2000, is the development of the plans. And obviously, they came to the planning board, we did the presentation, we did presentations, they consulted with the regulations and with the DEM, and they got it through those inclusive processes. I thought there was a third question. I'm going to answer to it.
I asked what the scope would be, whether it. I do have some other questions now, and you and I had discussed that on Sunday, as far as the DEM being filed or that there are weapons. And if you recall, you and I, when we were out there, we were looking for the silvers. Now, after everybody I did speak to, Rep. the zoning, building and zoning official, and he said that there were silvers. I don't recall seeing them, et cetera, on the left side where you and I had pointed it out. There was some further down, but we believe that was the other property, the property next door. Do you recall seeing silvers there? I don't recall seeing them. I didn't see them. They said that, yes, there are there. Do you recall?
I recall, sure, I recall. I recall seeing it right up the road, going up into the woods.
Yes, but I didn't see it. We look in the plans here, there are further. I'm just concerned that if DEM, how I did, Rep. did tell me that there had been a phone call made to DEM and that he was contacted by them to see if everything was in, and he said, yes, indeed, that there were silvers. As I said to you, I am a novice at this. I do not know much, and I was hoping to get more answers as far as to what the plan was with that silvers. I don't recall seeing the silvers all along as it's presented here. I was just asking, if you recall seeing it there too, because it was something that I was trying to point out. On C five, seems to be a popular page. It's the same page with the driveway, the.
Yes, this is the page that shows it going, so it's from all, all the way around, on the page, on all the way around, it also shows how the stone has to support the sides now. Absolutely. So, it goes, it doesn't go all the way around phase one, because they're not in the back. It goes back to the point where they are currently doing the work.
So, we will not be violating the DEM, because according to Rep., they're going to be coming out, and they take his word and then they come up themselves and move. I do not want this to be at the town, because as I read this, we are the contractor I spoke to, Mrs. King, we are the contractor that's responsible for X, Y, and Z. I don't want to be violating the DEM.
I don't want to be in violation. I look to the building inspector to say if what's there is adequate. If he tells me that it's adequate, then that's his job.
And do you know, because when I was there, he was trying to get in touch with the company to see whether it was matured or that fabric.
I think he got that answer. I don't know which one it was, but I think he got that answer.
And so, it's being ordered and it will be installed next week for the stone to be put in?
That's what I've been told.
I agree. And again, I am not in opposition to the field.
Julia.
Just a quick update, it's yesterday when I was in, that DEM enforcement officer passed the complaint on to the supervisor of weapons who had a renovation permit. I spoke the first day. And she knows that the silvers is around the current limits of disturbance, and she's signed with that. Where the silvers is shown on phase one is the ultimate limit of disturbance for phase one. She also knows that the construction entrance is not in place yet, she's in time with that as well. And Crossman called today, for some reason. Rep.'s voicemail is speakerphone, so everyone can hear it. And they did say it was the federal government, not the U.S. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon.
Mr. Lewis, who specifically is the manager on this project?
Who's the manager on the overall?
Who's overseeing this project?
At this point, it's the public works department that is overseeing the driveway and the clearing.
So, they have, that's, Mr. Cadillo is in charge of?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I was on Spears Park. I have been at these meetings since day one of 2008 when we all started. And, you know, we were ex-its there, because a lot of us on Spears Park, their property abuts, where the parks are big. But the one thing that was never really clear to me, and a hundred times I asked it, why do we need this field? Why is this such a priority right now? Or like Mr. James said, we have so many other projects that just tower over this police station. I mean, what is, we're not going to recruit anyone, return on investment, it's not a deal with this field. What, why do we still do it? I thought this died when we changed council members, you know, within one of the elections. And I was fine with that, because I didn't hear anyone, I said, "Good," because this really is a priority, is a project that is not a priority. So, how do we prioritize projects here? And how does this come first, before the police station?
Well, the police station is going to be very expensive. It's going to be very expensive.
Yeah.
And the work that's been initiated on this field is not expensive at all. When you cut down a few trees, and you do some grading, you put a truckload of stone, it's much less expensive. So, as far as what the, so, so that's one, one aspect of prioritization is, is cost. The police station is high priority, but it's also high cost. There will be a proposal in front of this council, imminent, in the next couple of months. We've been working on that. We've hired an architect. The architect has measured the building. The architect has drawn up some preliminary plans, and it is moving forward. That's a very expensive project. So, this is not supporting that, they're simultaneous, they're both moving forward. As far as a project dying with a council, when the voters of the financial town meeting approve a project, they trump the council. The council doesn't have the authority. Five votes or three votes on the council don't have the authority to say, "You know what? The heck with the financial town." They approve the recreation field. The Rhode Island, state of Rhode Island and DEM gave the town of Foster $75,000, which the town foster accepted, $75,000, for the purpose of building a recreation field. We have a commitment to the voters, we have a commitment to the state of Rhode Island. We also accepted construction equipment, bulldozers and trucks from the federal government less open for construction of part of this field. So, we have also a commitment to the federal government. So, when all of these commitments are in place, so this council, the next council, it's irrelevant. The voters have spoken, and the town has accepted money from the state.
Why does this proposal have to be followed by voters?
May of 2008. Exactly. May 6th, 2008.
So, if you say that the financial council overrules you guys as far as anything to do with these projects, then in the two years where we didn't hear anything more about this, why did the financial committee bring it to life again?
One of the financial committee, the financial town meeting.
Financial town meeting. Why did they bring it to life again, instead of, you know, doubling down on governance or what, you had this die because of two years? Town council has no authority, once the financial town meeting or however your attorney would ask, has made a decision, it should have been them to bring it to life again. And if that didn't happen.
I disagree with you.
Well, that's the way you just said that the hierarchy goes, is that we mean nothing. We can't overwhelm the financial.
Financial town meeting is the tax, is the taxpayer, is the electorate.
Exactly.
It's like, it's like, it's like an election. It's like an election. Maybe I wasn't happy with the vote when President so-and-so was elected, I didn't support George W. Bush, but he won. The voters spoke, and that's it. It is what it is. So, can the town council alter what happened in the financial town meeting? If there's an emergency, sure. If there's an emergency, if Penn School blew up tomorrow, we would need to make some sort of emergency. And all bets are off, we would vote to shift to deal with the emergency. But there's not an emergency. There's not an emergency like that. What we're doing here is we're following through with a project that's been gestating since the spring of 2008 and has met with approval every step of the way by the council, by the financial town. by the council, by the financial town meeting, by the planning board, by the D E M, by the D O T. It's never been dead. It's continuously been progressing towards realization. And the only reason it's here is because now people see the drive.
Yeah, I'm not discussing, so the driveway went online, so what the hell's going on?
Now it's happening. But it was always going to happen. Since, since the financial town meeting in two thousand eight approved it, since the town took the money from D E M, it was always going to happen. It was just a matter of time.
Well, why it was gestating for two years? Did the town, no, eight years. Did the town lose anything? Did the town suffer? No. Taxpayers are suffering now, because we have to pay for this field. We have to now and then eventually pay for the, 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 the spot. It makes, to me, it just makes no sense. You still haven't answered my question. Why do we need a recreation field?
Because the voters of the town foster voted to put one. And that's, that's the bottom line. You know, why do we need anything? If the voters say they want to buy a new police station, then we do. If they want to buy a new fire truck, then we do. If they say, why not buy a new fire truck, then we don't. There is, it's, it's the, it's the will of the financial town meeting. Right, so, yeah, Mr. Stone.
What's the final number on the project? Money wise? It is seventy-five thousand eight years ago.
That was the land acquisition. Okay, so the, the cost on the land acquisition, the land is owned outright. There's no debt. There's no, okay. Um, it's been surveyed. It had its title searched. It had all of those acquisition costs. It had an environmental impact done. All that's paid for. It had the engineering claims done. All that's paid for. This initial driveway clearing, it's not costing us anything other than, I think, a few times. When there's two people working on this project and nothing else going on, someone goes over there and banks it. So there is no additional expenditure at this point. There may be at some point, and of course, the longer we wait, the higher it's going to be. When there are costs, those will have to come through the normal budget process. And they'll have to go to the financial town meeting to approve fencing, for example. Fencing around the little area, that'll have to come through the budget process.
So we're starting the project, and we don't, we don't know how we're going to finish it.
I know how we're going to finish it. It's just a matter of time.
But I'm going to have to pay you money to finish it.
You're going to have the opportunity at the financial town meeting to vote for the budget, which you'll find a little not depending on your vote. But what's going on right now is not costing you. There it is. The cost of fixing the wall was done incorrectly. Maybe you can volunteer to assist.
Maybe if it came and brought the council, we wouldn't have been in the position where it would have been done correctly the first time.
I, I disagree with you that it wasn't done correctly. What's the correct way to get to Boston? What's the correct way?
I can go to Provincetown, that's where I'm from.
What's your journey? It's two different, it's two different ways. How to make a progress.
Couple of years, you might have to go around the toes.
Again, I, I have two things. Number one, Mr. Rogers never answered my question about when he was informed by the police department, uh, police chief, that this was going to start. Why did he not?
Chief, when did you know? December eighteenth.
December eighteenth.
It wasn't a phone call. You were in the vehicle. And you said you would have the tools and moved up there. We were going to stop the whole ball through your project. We would stop the whole field in? No. Okay.
Okay, that's two months for you to question, why are you, what do you think? He's just going to store it there?
He answered your question.
And the other thing is, yeah, yeah, it's, he didn't answer my question. You have known for two months. The other thing is, the council is responsible, or it is their job, to implement what the people want.
The entire council.
The entire council.
Right.
Is responsible for completing the will of the people. It's the will of the people. It's not the will of the council. The council cannot at this point say, you know what? We're not going to do this.
Was it the will of the people to put ten thousand dollars in fixing the barn at the police station at a financial town meeting?
And was it the will of the council to use that money for something else? That was your decision.
It had it both ways.
Was it, there was a situation where the ten thousand dollars wasn't going to do the job?
Mr. Lewis, this is going no place. We move on.
I, I, I'm going to recommend just a couple of long comments.
I just have, I'd like some clarification. Oh, you do?
Counsel first.
You had, um, when we met on Sunday, there were, I would just like some clarification. I had asked if a forester had come in. We talked about Mr. Thurgood. You said that, um, a construction person was notified, and they came in and said that there was no wood. You did not believe that's forester. You said that's a construction person.
Construction person did. That's, that's correct.
But tonight, you're saying that a forester came in, J R.
J R Van Agro, yes. And they did not have that information when we spoke.
They never heard of that company.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So there was, no, there was a forester, not a construction person.
There was, there were both.
One of the same?
It's, right, the gentleman owns the logging company and the construction.
Okay, so it's the same person?
The same person, right.
Thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, Mr. Stone asked a question, and I didn't hear an answer. Uh, I believe he asked what the proj, this project was projected. Mr. Stone asked a question, and I didn't hear an answer, of what the projected cost of this project is supposed to be.
As in what happened yet? The cost of the phase that we're doing right now is just D P W.
Which is just the driveway? And the entrance?
So far, so far.
Is that what we're going forward with at this point? It's just the driveway? It's just a drive? I mean, the, the entrance?
No, no, that's not, that's not the total extent. The total extent of...
Into Phase one?
Is to open up the land in preparation for Phase one.
And, and D P W is going to handle that whole?
Opening up the land, I believe they can.
The whole part of the project. When does a contractor step into this to do the site work?
We'll have to go out to the... When does that happen? It depends on how, uh, how long it takes.
I'm, I'm a little confused about why we're, why we're...
Spring is like, if the spring is incredibly muddy, we're going to be working.
Why, why are we going forward with a project without even a, a plan or an end result?
We have a plan.
No, I understand the drawings. I understand engineered drawings. It's, it's...
That's the plan.
That's done. That's probably paid for.
That's the end result.
We don't have, we don't have a number of what it's actually going to cost for Phase one. Uh, you're going forward with a plan, but we, we, we don't know what it's going to cost. We don't even know what it's going to cost to put this Phase one in.
We don't.
We're starting a project without a cost.
That doesn't mean we don't initiate it and take it as far as we're able. When they built the town.
If they say, if they, if they say Phase one's going to cost four million dollars, can we, can we proceed with the project?
No. This week? No.
Next week?
No. I know there are lots of recreational grants available, and in fact, I've got a card. We went to a seminar not so long ago. I've got a card, information on Sailor Island Recreation of...
I'm not against the field being built. I, what, do we have? I'm not against the field being built. I'm, I'm curious to see what it's going to cost to do it.
Right. You want, you're asking, what is?
I don't want it to be an emergency at the eleventh hour that we have to come up with X amount of dollars or this thing's not going to fly.
I, I don't know where that field, that would be an emergency. If you're asking, what is this whole thing going to cost? You don't have that number. You don't have that number.
This is a public project. No one was a financial researcher.
Lewis, you have to get the whole.
Cause, I know. I'm going to get this gentleman here. I'm going to get Mr. Sheldon. Once again, the financial town meeting decided to build a recreation field.
Did they give you the money to do it?
They gave us enough money to purchase.
To buy the property.
Do you want to hear my answer, or do you want to talk over each other? The financial town meeting voted to purchase and construct a recreation field. In May two thousand eight, they didn't know what the cost of this whole development would be. It was presented to them, and they said, yes, okay, go forward, knowing that at certain points in the future, it's going to be back in front of them. Uh, we need some fencing. We're going to do this. We need a contractor to do this or that. Those things will be addressed as they come up. But at this point, what we're doing is we're prepping the land, and there's no cost to that. And the longer this takes, Mr. Stone, to get done, I can assure you, the more costly it will be. It's already been held back eight years.
Suppose you get a fine number, and you put it to the taxpayers, and they decide not to pay.
Then that is their will. And they, they change their opinion, and I would rebound by that. If the taxpayers don't wish to pay.
You're not even a hole in the woods, sound like ninety-four.
Well, then I'm going to go write a grant. Taxpayers don't want to pay for it. I assure you, I'll make grant money to do it. Mr. Sheldon? Oh, you know what? This gentleman first.
Uh, Thurgood.
Uh, how are you?
First of all, we did, we did not perform good diligence in your research in terms of the clearing. You asked Joseph Managro, assault for playing bars. He's not a bar, not around here. Listen, consulting bars, he's in, he's newly in the clearing business, because he can't get clearing. No, he should have cleared the land, and he's going to excavate it. He's in the excavation business. He's not in the clearing business. There is lumber on that property. Not a lot. It's insignificant, like Ron said. It's not a lot of money, you know, when it comes to the big picture. But you totally destroyed the resource that you had available to you at this point. And there was some money there that could have, as George said, offset some of the clearing costs. You are, you are sitting on albatross at this point. This piece of property is just, it's a mess. We have slumps on upper rocks, uprooted, some cut, uh, soil is mixed. Everything Gordon says, far as I'm concerned, I agree with, and this is not how you start a project. You have a plan. Yes, you have a site plan, but you don't have an operational plan in place. And I'm sorry, but your Director of Public Works is obviously not qualified to take on a project like this, because you say this, this hasn't washed you money. It has washed you money at this point, because now you have to remediate the site in which you have made an absolute disaster of. It's dangerous. It's, it's, it's not a verge of criminal, as far as I'm concerned, because you, you didn't, and you took the opinion of one person. I have plenty of work. This is not about that I don't want to see the field built. I do want to see the field built. And it's not about the fact that I didn't get the job. I don't need the job. I would have liked to have seen it done properly. I would have liked to have been involved with it. Uh, I would have helped the town with it. But you have gotten off on the wrong foot here. Take time. And it needs to stop until someone who has the knowledge of conducting an operation like this is, is present. Because Mr. Cadillo does not. Your operator has no business being in that bulldozer. It's, it's, it's dangerous what he's doing. It's just wrong. It's not an opinion. It's a professional opinion. This is what I do. I've been self-employed for twenty-five years. You, you people have appointed me the quarter of wood. It would be criminal if I did not say something and just stood by and continued to watch this nonsense. And I'm, and I'm sorry. I'm upset about it.
I appreciate your remarks.
It's, it's a shame, and I, I just, I think, I think something, something has to be done.
You believe that remediation has to be done. It does have to be done. The architect will follow what happens. If something is pushed to the left, we should be pushed to the right. We push to the right.
There's no other plan. There's no line of reason as to what has been done.
Someone reluctant to let the intention be.
Well, I'm sorry. I retract, I retract. And again, it's not about the person. It's just about what has been done. Um, I don't know the person's background, but it is obviously not in site development. You know? And I'm a small rookie in terms of the, of the faith in town, and, um, but it's, it's just a real shame that we got started off on the wrong foot.
We'll get it on the right foot, we'll get it. Mr. Sheldon?
You refer to, uh, financial town meeting, they approved, approved the study money.
I did.
Is all the money that was approved at the financial town meeting a snap?
I believe it all has, yes.
So the town's obligation to go on your purpose is relevant to going back to financial community and requesting more money? Otherwise, you're incurring debt to, to finish it that hasn't been approved.
I don't believe that's the case. And once you start to set money...
You mean the spent money that you have, is it in a bank somewhere?
No, Mr. Sheldon, I just told you it was spent. But I also mentioned earlier that the town took seventy-five thousand dollars from the state under the condition that we build a recreation.
And you have a letter from them right now stating, get busy with this project, or we will take our money back.
No, they're not threatening you. That doesn't mean we don't have the obligation.
We've already discussed prioritization.
Already discussed what, please?
Prioritization. If you're going to spend money, whatever, even if it's in, in ways and sizes of the D P W, which, by the way, this gentleman, this gentleman over here was absolutely correct. You hired a guy that didn't know what he was doing, and you knew it when you hired him. Okay, so, so now that he may have made a mistake, you're going to cover his butt. I understand that. But what I don't understand is, if you know that you're going to start this project, and you know that somewhere down the road, you're going to spend money, you may not be the council president at the time when it happens, and you may not even want to get a grant. So when you're talking about this, you personally are incurring, because none of the other council members knew this, you're incurring debt for this town that hasn't been approved by a financial town meeting.
I'm not incurring any debt whatsoever.
The money that's finished this project, unless you're going to leave the project unfinished for years.
Well, that wouldn't be my intention.
So you're going to finish it between now and January.
That would be great. I'd like your support of the financial town meeting to fund it.
Love to see it bought, you. Love to see it done right by the new set.
I'd love to see it done. I'd love to see Phase one done by January. Is it realistic? I don't know. Is it worthy of a conversation? I think absolutely. It's been, it's been propelling for eight years.
But my question hasn't been answered. You haven't had any funds approved by the financial community, because you spent all the funds that had been approved in that town meeting that you keep referring to forcing you to do this.
I, I did answer that question. We did spend all that money. Yes.
Okay, so you have no further funds to spend on that project?
No. But we're not incurring any cost at this point.
Those, those guys who manned that truck box just found money. You're telling me they got nothing else to do?
Want to lay off Jeff? Come on, let's let this go.
Is, there's nothing else to do? There's always something to do, Mr. Sheldon. I mean, my wife always tells me, what are you going to the town and hope for when there's so much to be done at home? Somebody can always make a case, this is more important than this. And, and my opinion is, we have a hundred different things going on in the town.
I agree. I agree. Somebody can always make that decision, but you made it without even consulting these other people.
And we have to move forward on all fronts. That's what we have to do.
In a responsible way. Responsible is one council member out of, out of five knows what's going on. And I might point out to you that a few years ago, another council member took it upon himself to do something for the town, and you threw an ethics violation at him.
I never filed an ethics violation against anyone.
What?
Chief, again, I'm not an expert excavator there, whatever, but I, I did, or I was responsible for obtaining the equipment for the town, which will be added to the town in years to come. We justified using or just made qualifications to obtain the, uh, equipment from the federal government, which is less appropriate. Um, no, we just completed an audit, and within that audit, we used the pictures and the video from the evidence and storage bay at the D P W. We also explained that the project was proceeding at the school, across the school. The federal government wants to see progress, not that the progress that Foster is used to. So again, this is the equipment. I believe the four pieces of equipment, close to five hundred thousand dollars, remains the property of the Foster Police Department for these projects that can be, you know, again, can be benefited now for years to come. Again, my, my issue is at the cost, how is this called?
Yeah, so, I thought there was a little game on the side. Is there something else?
Uh, just that, it was very clear at the May sixth, two thousand eight, um, financial town meeting, that the money the taxpayers were asked to appropriate was only for the acquisition of the land. And it was always the intention of the council to then look to grants and to find ways to fund it, rather than, you know, going, you know, immediately going back to the people. That was never the plan, there's a lot of money out there. However, no one has tried, no one has pursued it. But you've got to have a beginning. You have to start. How many times have you seen where someone's opened a house, and the first thing they do is they clear the land and they dig the hole?
Another expert.
All right?
All right. And Chief? Okay. And again, I just wanna make reference to Mr. Lewis' comment, um, in reference to advising Mr. Rogers and listening to Frank. All the council was involved in obtaining all four of these pieces of equipment. Again, I don't remember a specific conversation, but all the council was involved in obtaining all four of these, um, pieces of equipment, and the reasons that we were gonna use this equipment before.
Which was the field?
So I'm looking now behind the police station, or a police station, Washington maybe station. There you go.
Okay, okay. I think you- So, two other items, and they both also deal with the area. That was asked by this, and Gordon also mentioned, is there value in the wood, the value in the wood, the firewood? So, let's make a decision how to dispose of the timber, it's all stacked over there to one side. Disposition of the timber from the phase one recreation field has been cleared by the DPW. I believe we made a motion that we cut that up and offer that up to residents of the town for free. Done to use and then we'll call.
Second act for discussion purposes.
Thank you, discussion.
That's what we're looking at right there, this is just the picture, you have it in there, these are a little bit clearer, it's specifically the wood pile. And like I mentioned, and we've mentioned in the audience, that this was basically all tangled up in stones, logs, and marten rocks, and pushed up into Ohio. I think at this point, without proper equipment to separate that safely, I believe we are putting our DPW workers at risk in trying to untangle what was pushed into a pile with a twenty-ton dose. Just my opinion, I've cut quite a bit of wood, I've bought a lot of wood, I've cut a lot of wood, and that right there is a dangerous situation without a machine with a thumb to separate and handle it. Not only that, it is so full of mud and rocks, because it was pushed not on leaves and dirt, but it was pushed on rocks and ground, and full of mud. So, just a hot top of chainsawing, you know, chopping with chainsaws, I think you need to get a machine in it and chip it for safety purposes, with the right proper equipment. And there's a lot of pine in there also, and you can't sell giveaways by me.
So the, this is my discussion.
My head.
The new machine, is you see the, uh, machine that we just bought, actually has a thumb. Came in later, it has the thumb. It'll be attached to the machine, and there won't be a problem. And we also have, uh, individuals who have problems here to move that wood from that site over to somewhere with the DPW yard, at no cost to the town, so it can be put up and cut and stacked in a nice safe place for residents of the town.
It's the liability of those people going in and doing that work, possibly, and what I see is a dangerous situation, and I'm not feeling it, I mentioned that.
What's the liability for?
Them guys separating that wood.
The DPW?
Are they gonna separate it? With a, with that little, with the back over the thumb, manual thumb, or hydraulic thumb? I'm not saying, I don't feel comfortable putting our guys in trying to fix that mess. And I don't want this turned into, I'm voting against that for a million other different things, it's a seat issue to me, knowing what it's like to maintain this on.
So this is a result of our conversation on Sunday, when I also had concerns about-
What is, what?
Safety, and you said that they would probably rush to value, and I was concerned about the safety of the, of the DPW workers. And you said that they could, so now there is a machine, that you have a machine that will lift that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? So the motion is to allow that wood to go for firewood, for the residents of the town to have that in force.
I thought the motion was have the DPW guys separate that.
To separate it in order.
Just wanna make sure that, that, that's possible.
Absolutely.
And then the wood will be provided to residents of town, local stores, and local stores. Further discussion?
For the purposes of liability, if there are volunteers handling any wood, they can sign a waiver, a volunteer waiver, that would go then to the trust. And I do know that this has been political back and forth. And I do have concerns about the safety of those DPW workers, as I voiced to you. They, do I have your assurance, since we do not have our DPW, that they will take precautions that if they feel they're not safe doing this, they will stop?
Absolutely. They, every town worker, every fireman, every police officer, every tour or the DPW worker should be taking the appropriate precautions.
That's why, since you have that, if you're doing it, I wanna make sure that that's-
Absolutely, and every town worker, every worker in general, myself in my profession, yourself in your profession, if you feel that it is a dangerous situation, you should speak up and inform.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that because you made a motion that DPW is doing it, that it be done with the ultimate caution.
Absolutely. Um, okay, further discussion? All those in favor?
I don't know.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries forward to the judge. And then concerning the timber on phase two, which has not been touched at all, since there were concerns, that we should hire a logger, or someone to come in and-
I think we need to find a real forester that's on the DM website that's qualified for the job.
Go out for RFP, to have any logger make a proposal to the town.
Totally different decision.
Fine, if you wanna make a motion, that's fine, so you can have the terms. To have a forester, a logger, whether come in and, actually to go out and, to have a logger or a forester come in and assess that field and clear out the valuable wood.
That guy, that's two different things. You need to find out what you have first, you're not gonna have the guy go in and tell you what it's worth, and then he's gonna clear it, that's like, somebody's job is to do business, it's gonna benefit us. Forester goes in and estimates the lumber, the wood, and oak and pine, and gives it a dollar amount, at which point a logger can go in and clear, pay you for the profit of the lumber on the process. Now, that's where I was trying to mention before, it should've been done on phase one. You may be able to work something out where the logger, after the forester's going in and estimating the profit of lumber there, that he would trade off the cost of the lumber for clearing and shipping it with the proper equipment he has. So that's how the sheet is supposed to be done. So I, I will make a motion that we send our RFP out, have a forester go in to mark the timber and estimate the cost of, uh, the profit of timber that's in there, and the, and the quarters of firewood that's in there.
How much is this to ship?
On the phase two. You know, if you haven't done phase one yet, so if you got it in there, you might as well, might as well have to do the whole seven acres at the stand. So that would be my motion.
Is there a second? Special? Yes.
Where's the money going to come from to hire the forester?
Well, I think what he said, no.
No, forester and the logger, two different people.
The, the, it's not a lot of money, it's probably in the five hundred dollar range to go out and estimate the lumber. If you can find it somewhere, that's about what it's probably gonna cost. It's all he does is go in, look at the trees, realizing the size of the qualified lumber, estimates the board footage thing, and lose the whole parcel. It's not a lot, it is-
I think we can find that.
Our P is gonna cost more than the-
Well, I just find out.
I mean, if you really have to go out for-
He mentioned.
Consider proposal for that, it's gonna cost for average, and everything else more than the life of the forest. You just get focused and-
We've got to continue. So I think the motion would pick the parts. Well, let's go out and find out, uh, back up on this, let's find out what a forester costs before we move forward. At that point, we can get a estimate on what it's gonna cost for a forester, then we can move forward on, on hiring. So, let's, the motion is to contact the forester.
And get a place.
And get a place, on what it would cost, the more and less that makes possible. See what we got.
For a second. Discussion. None, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, are there any other future agenda items other than this list again?
Mr. Lewis, may I?
You may.
Is anybody concerned about those, uh, lists I gave you of people that know show on the planning board? Maybe you might wanna talk about that.
I, well, I think if everyone can look at them on their own time, I'm sure no one's had a chance to look at it today.
You can redo my work.
If anyone wishes it to be on the agenda, they can let me know it will be on the agenda.
We have tried that, and sometimes we don't get anything we want on the agenda, so. They fall by that, they get wrong.
When you look on the council-
Future agenda items, is there anything else? Hearing none, is there a motion to go through executive session?